Welcome to the April 23rd, 2024 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Vice Mayor Faraldi and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a brief moment of silence before I have an invocation?
Oh, there's ghosts in this place.
Lord, I thank you for this opportunity to serve your people, give us wisdom, help us to serve honorably, and above all else, honor you. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Are we good with the sound?
Currently have a few little.
Technical difficulties? I think it sounds good. Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll start tonight with Small Business Week proclamation. Marjette Upshurst, our Economic Development Tourism Director, will come up now for this presentation. Okay. I will read this proclamation to you, and then you can say a few words, and then I'll come down and take a picture if that's okay with you lovely ladies. Okay. Proclamation for Economic Development Week. Whereas more than 100,000 economic development professionals worldwide are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term community growth; and whereas the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, enhances the quality of life, and builds robust tax bases; and whereas economic development professionals operate throughout diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, provincial, and national governments, public-private partnerships, institutions of higher education, nonprofit and social organizations, and associations; and whereas economic development professionals serve as stewards who bridge connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrations to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, and infrastructure advancements; and whereas economic developers contribute to the betterment and progress of the city of Lynchburg within the Commonwealth of Virginia; and whereas our economic development leaders and partners are the driving force in advancing initiatives with a steadfast commitment to fostering growth and prosperity in the realm of business development and support workforce development and training initiatives, talent attraction and retention, and improving the quality of life in Lynchburg, now therefore I, Stephanie T. Reed, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, do hereby proclaim May 6 through 10, 2024 Economic Development Week in Lynchburg and recognize the hard work of the Office of Economic Development Tourism, the Economic Development Authority, and the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance due to advance our local economy and create a business-friendly environment for our region.
Thank you so much, Mayor Reed. And members of council, I just want to thank you for your support over the years. We are celebrating week after next National Economic Development Week, and then April 28th through May 4th, we are celebrating Small Business Development Week. So, there's no better time to bring some of the partners up here. So Megan Lucas, who's the CEO at Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, Stephanie Keener is the Executive Director of the Small Business Development Center. I'd also like to recognize DLA, Downtown Lynchburg Association, for their Launched in Lynchburg program. And then we have a curriculum where we've brought the graduates in front of you before, and Stephanie runs that program. That's our Co-Starters Program. So, right now, since you all said that everyone that got under $150,000 in grocery receipts did not have to have a business license, as of today, we have 1,542 businesses in the city of Lynchburg. And I dare say, right before that, before Mitch cut it off, we had another 1,500. So, the number of small businesses and our major employers, they're the reason that we stand up here in front of you and hopefully do the work that you send us out to do every day. And I could not be prouder than I am of this council that supports us.
Thank you. Well, I realized that I read the Economic Development Week first and not the Small Business Week once, so let me read that one also, please. Okay. Whereas America's strongest economic growth in almost 40 years has been driven by the resilience of our small businesses who despite a worldwide pandemic, continue to pioneer innovative solutions to our country's greatest challenges and create opportunities for families and workers. Whereas from storefront shops that anchor our downtown areas to high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas small business owners have energy and passion for what they do, and when we support small business, jobs are created and our local community preserves its unique culture. And whereas because this country's 32.5 million small businesses create nearly two-thirds of the jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas nearly 93% of businesses in the city of Lynchburg have fewer than 50 employees, and whereas 11% of undergraduate and graduate students already own and run their own businesses. And supporting these endeavors is critical to our economic vitality and diversification. And whereas the city of Lynchburg's Economic Development Authority and Office of Economic Development and Tourism, the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, the SBDC Lynchburg Region, and partners throughout the community work diligently to support, grow, and engage the small business ecosystem. Now therefore I, Stephanie T. Reed, Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, do hereby proclaim April 28 through May 4, 2024 as Small Business Week in Lynchburg and recognize their hard work, dedication, and contributions to our community. Can y'all come up for a picture?
Oh, yes.
You guys? Well, I'd rather get winter my phone. Full access right there.
Thank you, council. Thank you.
Look at that fancy phone. Man, what is that, Megan? What is that on the phone? Is that your phone? What is all?
It's just a crackle.
Wow, that's a lot of crackle. That's a lot of crackle.
All right. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections: public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is public hearing. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Consideration of adopting a resolution granting a non-exclusive interim license agreement to maintain and operate 1,670 linear feet of fiber optic cable between the city of Lynchburg and Sprint. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Lee Newland.
Sprint Communications has asked to be granted a license agreement to continue to use and maintain about 1,670 linear feet of fiber optic cable that was replaced originally back in 1995. The cable is used for communication purposes, and staff sees that the encroachments cause no hardships for the city.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you very much. We'll call you back up if we have any questions. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any voicemails?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. This item did go to our Physical Development Committee on March 12, 2024, and I will defer to the Chair of that committee, Councilmember Taylor.
This item came before the PDC, and we voted for approval, and I move that we vote for approval.
Okay, wonderful. This does not require a second, so is there any discussion from council? No? Okay, well, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Helgason?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Right. Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting an ordinance changing a certain area located at 717 and 725 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential Districts to R4 High Density Residential Districts. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Froschhausen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The subject property is comprised of two parcels located at 717 and 725 Leesville Road, approximately 42/100ths of an acre. If the petition is approved, an entrance to a 26-unit residential development would be constructed. The units would be duplex-style apartments with two units in each building. The residential units and the associated parking would be located within Campbell County and accessed via property in the city. The portion of the project located in Campbell County was rezoned in 2023 from general commercial business to multifamily residential. The duplex-style residential development should create more of a transition between the lower-density homes along Leesville Road and the more intense commercial development that would have occurred in Campbell County if this rezoning had not been pursued, as well as the remaining commercial that still surrounds that parcel within Campbell County. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning petition at their public hearing on March 13. This item was also introduced as a business item briefing on April 9, and there were some questions regarding particularly Bud Drive and Accessing Site, as it was included in your memo on the 16th. No legal ownership is known or established for Bud Drive, so it's also not wide enough to meet standards for a city street, therefore it's not an option. Thank you, and I will be happy to answer questions after the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
Good evening. Amy Sype with Icypoint Surveying and Design, one of the small businesses that is housed in the city of Lynchburg, so I appreciate your proclamation earlier. We have been working on this project for quite some time. We did receive approval from Campbell County. One thing I wanted to point out with the development, they did actually rezone even a larger swath of this to create a transition from the heavier general commercial near Simon's Run backed up to Leesville Road. So this would provide more of a transition between heavy commercial and single-family residential. In addition, the technical requirements that we would have to adhere to in Campbell County only allow us to cover 40% of the property in impervious area, i.e. paving, structures, all that can only be 40% of the property. So 60% of that property would still remain in green space and other landscaping buffers. What we are requesting, because this is one of those that falls on the line, is strictly access for the property. No structures or residences would be proposed in this area. Happy to answer any technical questions on Campbell County or city side.
Okay, great. We will call you back up if we have any. Thanks so much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Carl Miller. I live in Lynchburg, 1819 Royal Oak Drive. And Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Faraldi, members of council, thank you for considering this project. I'm a one-third partner on this project that Abundant Life Estates owns. My other two partners are Nathan Swory and Kendall Haas Settler. They are builders. They own H&amp;S Improvements, and they were the same company that helped do my office space on 7700 Timberlake Road that the city council approved for a rezoning back in 2019, and I'm grateful for that. That project turned out very well. I told city council when I started that project and you were considering it for rezoning that my intent was to be a good neighbor, and I feel like we fulfilled that process. And in fact, just last Friday, we hosted a free shredding day. We had the whole neighborhood show up. A lot of the neighbors, we invited the neighbors out, and we just have always strived to be a good neighbor there for those people in Windsor Hills. This project is mostly in Campbell County, as you guys know, but per city law, we just need access to it through a city property that we own. And we're just attempting to be compliant with what city code is for that. Our intent is to be a good neighbor, make an attractive project, and to provide housing. I'm a licensed real estate broker in Virginia in Lynchburg, and my office is on Lynchburg. But there's a real need for housing, especially under, you know, $300,000, and that's what we would be doing. We would attempt to make this a condo project, sell it to owner occupants or investors if they would like, but our intent is to keep our prices under $300,000 a unit, and there's a huge demand for affordable housing in Lynchburg. So this meets a need there, and again, we strive to make an attractive project that would be good for the neighborhood, good for the city of Lynchburg, even though this project is in Campbell County. We're adding 26 units that the city will benefit from for having those houses that close to the city line. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Timothy Santiago. I live here in the city of Lynchburg over on Euclid Avenue. I oppose this project for one reason. That's, for example, I was biking down the road today, and there's not enough room to add that much and then to keep doing it whenever someone asks for. Because when you set a precedent and do it once, you're going to do it again, and then again, and then again. And if you keep on, there's not enough infrastructure there. Now, let's say there's an accident where those cars come out at. Someone comes out sleepy one morning or one evening after work, and they get hit. They're on the Lynchburg city side. That's going to take a truck company all the way from Station 7. Truck 2 is the closest one, and if they're not available, it's going to be from downtown. We don't have the infrastructure in our emergency services to keep adding to that area. And until we do have it in the city, I urge this council to deny anything in that neighborhood that would be high density. Because with high density, if there's a fire over there and it spreads to the city, it's now on city emergency services also to help put out said fire or said incident. And considering where it's at in Campbell County, Lynchburg is probably going to get a mutual aid request, which means once again a drain on our resources. And if that's in Campbell County, we do not get tax revenue from it. So with that being said, I just urge you not to, because the road is already congested enough as is. And with that, I yield and say thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Any voicemails from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Would you like to make a rebuttal to that statement of opposition? You have five minutes.
This neighborhood has definitely started to be a transitional neighborhood. Years ago, it was more of a single-family home residence. Many of these properties are now rentals. There has been more development along the road. Unfortunately, just like VDOT, roads don't come in and then everybody builds to the roads. As a need arises, improvements to the road will be made. We've performed a traffic analysis for this development, and we are in compliance with the needs for an entryway. All the engineering specs would still have to be followed for the city. And as far as people being sleepy, I hope they're going to get coffee and wake up and be careful drivers. So, everything about this project will meet all the technical specification and engineering requirements for traffic along this road. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Do I have a motion? Councilman Helgason?
Thank you. You know, considering this project, and as we talked about a few weeks ago at the business item briefing, I see no reason to take an R1 neighborhood where every property is R1. And basically doing a spot zoning that says we're going to make all these R1 properties. If you can go back a slide, Rachel, a couple where it has the R1. Oh, maybe we're at a different thing.
The packet map is slightly different. This one shows...
Okay, so the packet map shows all the R1. R1, 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 then bam, right in the middle being R4. With that, I can't vote in favor of it, not because of just lots of things. One, it's spot zoning. Taking all that, that is R1. And right in the middle, making it R4. For what benefit? For the benefit of a development that's going in Campbell County. With that, you would think that Campbell County would have the road, or they would build the entrance through Campbell County, rather than taking all of these residents that are going to be in Campbell County, paying taxes in Campbell County, driving on our already busy Leesville Road, and having it just to go right through. So, looking at this project, I see no reason, I see that it is spot zoning where you're taking all the R1, making one an R4. There's no benefit to the city of Lynchburg for doing this. I'm sure the developer will make a good project in Campbell County. I'm sure they'll have good residents and 26 houses that are going to be worth money in Campbell County. The problem is when you rezone this particular parcel, 725, you're then having now the precedent that says the next project, the next one up the street. Well, hey, that's R4, so I can be R4. Then what happens? Well, the next one can be R4. So I think we should stop this right where it is, and I agree with Mr. Santiago, that this isn't a good way. If you can figure out how to get on Bud Drive, I recognize that there's difficulty with that, but you can either get through Bud Drive or you can come through Campbell County. We shouldn't be, you know, making the Leesville Road neighborhood the doormat for a project in Campbell County. So, I'll make a motion that we deny this rezoning as presented.
Madam?
Councilman Missions?
I need a second on that, please.
I'm going to second the motion, but I also want to get some clarification. And may end up offering an amendment to that, Councilman Helgason, if I get some of these points. The first question that I have is probably for the fire chief, who's sitting in here. Chief, are you able to come up here and answer a couple of questions for me about this? Yeah, and I'm just asking questions that... So, how's this going to work? Is there going to be a mutual aid agreement for this? I mean, if we're entering a multifamily complex into the city, what's going to be the demand on our system with that?
Well, it's really hard to say at this point without knowing a little more information, but we have mutual aid agreements and automatic aid agreements with all of our county partners already.
Okay. All right, and that was just the main question that I had for you, because I am curious about that, because it looks to me like the only, am I correct about that, Rachel, that the only ingress and egress out of this Campbell County project is to the city of Lynchburg?
That is currently the only egress.
All right, and the traffic that comes out of there, any traffic accidents that occur are going to be automatic city responses coming out of that, because that isn't a city.
That would be my understanding, yes, sir.
So, that was just something I want to point out there on that. But that's all I had for you. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. The next question I have is probably for you, Amy. What? What other alternatives are there? Have there been other alternatives looked at? I know, like, obviously, us rezoning this to R4 is the best case and probably the easiest, least restrictive path.
Sure.
Right?
So, the way, my understanding, because we're only asking for entrance, it reverts to the county of how the county zoning was performed. So, the zoning in the city has to match whatever's going on in the county, which is multifamily.
So the zoning in the city has to match whatever's going on in the county, which is multifamily. So while I hear it's spot zoning, it can only be used for a driveway. So Bud Drive, if we could somehow prove that that was a road, we've researched it to the nth degree. I know that city staff has researched it. And I've actually come along two other roads in the city that nobody knows who owns it.
What are they?
So I'll tell you. Well, one is, it doesn't have a name, but it's over off of Wendell near McConville. And then another one is out near 29. I think that one's actually in Campbell County, but nobody owns that. Like, VDOT doesn't own that. And so there's just these roads that pop up that, I guess, over time have been created that people can't...
There's a whole list I know about that actually have 911 addresses, and it's like, where's the road?
Right.
I've been to them. I've been to actual houses off those roads.
Right.
Yeah, I get it.
So it's hard to prove ownership. We are asking, and you mentioned fire, we do have an exhibit, and it was probably in your packet as part of that. We did provide turnaround access for fire apparatus if there were ever a need to go in there. And we're also proposing exit-only onto Bud Drive to support, if there was an accident at the main ingress/egress, that would be exit-only, or only for emergency services. So that was part of our plan as well.
So I guess the question I have is... I second Jeff's motion because I agree that we should not spot zone this parcel. I also want to see this project succeed.
Sure.
The question that I have is, is there a possibility that with, because if we deny it, then you have to start right back from the beginning?
Sure.
So the question I have is, is there an option where if we were to give you guys some more time, we could look at other alternatives?
If we want to take over Bud Drive, and the city wants to take over Bud Drive, then it would become a public street, and not a private entrance. So I think until, you know, we've exhausted our research and legal documents. So unless the city has some magic research that I don't know about, then I don't...
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to...
Councilman Helgason?
On the Bud Drive, and I guess Mr. Martin isn't here, but over the years, we've done lots of things where there was an unknown road that was then either purchased or acquired by the adjacent property owners, and then that was utilized as a private road for those folks. So if you acquire or figure out what can be done with either an easement or acquiring that Bud Drive, since nobody's claiming it, then you take that and make that without a rezoning, but you are expanding the road or that drive as your personal driveway without having to rezone Bud Drive, since it's yours and coming in the back way. So that...
I think we can't purchase something that we don't know who owns.
And that's, again, if the city owns it, or we can go through a condemnation process, if you don't think the city owns it, somebody's got to own it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's streets that, you want to speak to that more? I mean...
I would say even if we could figure out how to acquire it, or if we were able to prove that it is city right-of-way, it would still present a problem for the project because it does not meet the city standard for a small residential street even. Bud Drive pavement width is only about eight or nine feet, and it does not have the minimum right-of-way width either, which is only about 15 feet. We would need 20 feet of pavement, and 40 feet of right-of-way would be the standard. They also don't own the adjoining parcels.
Right. So we couldn't give up what we don't. It would have to go through an eminent domain take, which nobody wants to, I mean, nobody wants to take from other people to build a road for, you know. So basically, a private entrance or a commercial entrance or multifamily entrance is pretty much what we're left with.
So the major hang-up really is that it has to match what's in Campbell County?
That's...
That is consistent with zoning decisions that we've made in the past. For example, the Centra project that was on Leesville Road, even to get the access drive, there was a little bit of parking. You'll recall that the buildings actually were in Campbell County, same case as here. There was a little bit of parking. But even just to do a driveway from Leesville into the county portion, that needed to be rezoned, and that's the rule that we've historically gone by.
And then there's, I guess, because you don't own the property, there's no way you can get out to... I can't remember the name of that road. I want to call it Helgason Highway. But what's that road there off of Leesville that takes you into Coles?
Compton.
That's Compton Way. Because you don't own the property to that, but I see the Bud Drive extending beyond that. Is that just a paper road there?
I think it's just a paper street. It's just a paper street. And I don't even think that it goes, I don't think that mapping is correct, because I think it cuts off, it more turns into a kind of a farm road. But we don't own, the developer does not own any of those rear parcels, so there really is no access at that point for them to get back there.
Is there any other alternative? Or could Time come up with any other alternative than the...
Not unless people want to donate some other parcels and houses that we don't have access to.
Yeah, because I just, I do not like the whole, I don't like the idea of the spot zoning. That is a big hang-up for me.
Yeah, and that was a different, I mean, because it's just for a driveway, so that was just kind of a new thing for us in this process, was that it has to match. And I get that it's unique because it's city, county, and that whole, you know. But that's what we're coming up against more and more as, you know, fringes are getting wider and wider, so.
If I could offer, if it helps council with just the context of why planning staff initially recommended approval, I hear what you're saying about the spot zoning. If you are looking strictly at the city parcels, I could see your point. Zooming back out to see the county zoning, which we have here, which is more intense commercial against those Leesville Road, single-family parcels, we felt like the town homestyle apartments would make a better transition between those two uses, so.
And buffer it a little bit from, you're not going to come in with a heavy business zoning right up against R1.
It's kind of interesting. We're sitting here debating the protecting the low-density city properties from the high-density county properties trying to encroach on them.
Of course, those are commercial properties up front, like Simon's running, all those, yeah. So...
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Faroldi?
I'll look to the manager and answer just some very quick questions.
I'll do my best.
So the proposal here is to have the entrance be a public or private street? It's fresh, hasn't, you can sit down, it's okay. Thank you, though. Let's pretend I'm ignorant for a moment. In a private street, who's responsible for maintaining that?
The owner.
The owner. And if it's a private, if it's a public entrance, like Bud Drive, the taxpayer is then footing the bill for maintaining it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the developer's taking the financial burden of the entrance, correct?
That is correct.
Eminent domain would mean the city government would come in and tell the private owner, whoever it is, that we're taking their property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the alternative that is being broached here is...
That is a bold-faced lie, Chris.
So the alternative that's being considered here, I'll continue. I let you talk for your good 10 minutes. The alternative that has been thrown out there is that Bud Drive could be used, now that I can get the idea out, and that the city would have to maintain it, or the developer would have to maintain it. Either the city taxpayer or the developers out on that front. Now that I've had a chance to get the idea out there, if you'd like to interrupt me again, I'd happily let you. My point in all of this is simply to say that the city is financially better off by letting the private developer do the private entrance, that it's better off because we can't identify an owner of Bud Drive. And that would be a nightmare if there's some clause in there about who can purchase it, first right refusal, who God knows where that would go. And then the only criticism we've heard is related to public safety. Now, Chief, I'm coming back to you. You weren't ready for this one, but you don't have to get up, it's a joke. Where's the new fire station coming that we're planning for?
Is it off Lisa? No. I'm following, at the end of it.
Liberty Mountain Road.
Liberty Mountain Road, yeah.
Liberty Mountain Road. This new station, Station 9, will serve primarily where? The territory of town.
Yeah.
Ward's Road and Leesville Road, is that correct? And there's also going to be a new ladder truck coming for that station, correct?
Correct.
So we're addressing the concern of the response rate, the ladder truck, and the safety coming from the city. I have a substitute motion that the project be approved.
I'll second on the substitute motion. Okay. Do you want to speak anymore to that?
No, I'll just be interrupted.
Okay. Would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just a last question. What happens if they do not approve the item, the change in zoning? Is there another, is there a backup plan, or do you still do the development, or...
So if there is no entrance, then the project could not move forward. And we have a time limit of a year, right? If it's denied?
To bring it back to council.
To bring it back to council, to have some alternative. So because this is really our only entrance, our only main way to get in, we would, it would then remain zoned. Because the rezoning has been approved in Campbell County, it would remain zoned as it is, but there would be no entrance to the property, so.
Which part of it is the city? Just the red piece, or...
Just with the arrow where it says R1 with the arrow, the orange, everything from the heavy, I think that's a green line, the heavy green line is in Campbell County. So the orange and the red are all in Campbell County. And the piece on the front with the arrow is the little sliver that's the city.
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate it. This is just the one, but as far as the committee, when they had the planning committee, what were any objections from the planning committee? What were their thoughts on the project?
The planning commission did not receive any comments.
Were they in favor of it, or...
Planning commission recommended approval, yes.
They did recommend approval? Okay. Thank you. No other comments.
Councilman Dolan?
Well, I really like the idea that these are homes that will be owned by individuals rather than rental properties. I think that's good. I think in terms of being good neighbors to Campbell County, it's not a bad idea that we support this. I also know that this developer's done great work in the past, and I respect what he will be doing. So I think it's, they're not going to build any more homes on the Lynchburg side, so it's really just road access. I think I would support it.
Councilman Taylor?
I'm in favor of it. Is it possible that this, Kent, that the city and the county can come up with an agreement that the county will maintain that road, that stretch of road there, or the developer will put it in contract that he will maintain it?
As it's proposed, Mr. Taylor, the developer will maintain the road.
All right. So I'd like to go ahead and call a vote for the substitute motion.
Speak to the substitute motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman, any questions?
I just want to, one, I do have a couple more questions. First thing I want to do, though, is I want to point something out, and this is actually, Fire Chief, I do have a question for you, since, you know, we were asking legitimate questions earlier, and then political questions came up. So the question I have for you, I'm looking at the proposed FY25 budget. It says that you submitted for 198 sworn full-time firefighter positions, and the manager proposed 188, which is 10 less. Is that correct?
I don't have the document in front of me, so...
But I mean, that's what it says. So you asked for 198, and the manager proposed 188, which is 10 less than what you asked for, correct?
Yes.
So what were those 10 additional positions for?
There were nine, if I recall. It was nine additional staff, in the event we did not get a safer grant, and one additional unfunded position, if I recall.
So I guess the question I'm trying to get to here is, do we have the staffing to open the ninth fire station right now?
Not right now. We don't have the staffing, certainly.
We do not.
But we've applied for a safer grant, as you all are aware.
And the most expensive piece of operating a ninth fire station will be the staffing, I assume? Is that right?
Correct.
And...
One of the reasons that that request wasn't funded is because it's extraordinarily unlikely that that station will open in fiscal year 2025. So we reconsider that request in 2026, when the station is likely to open. If, as Liberty builds at a rapid pace, so if we get the design documents done and they are somehow able to get the station close to being ready to occupy, we'd come back to council likely with a request and a plan to make sure that we had adequate staffing to open it up.
But it is a substantial amount of money. We're going to have to figure out how to come up with whether a safer grant or otherwise to stay at that station. We have not...
We feel pretty good about the safer grant. Yes.
But we do not have the funding to open that station today, as far as personnel.
We have resources necessary to build. We have the equipment necessary to put inside the station. As to the people, it's a timing issue, like just what Greg said. So in a budget that's fiscally constrained, and remember, we only proposed four new positions to meet the 96,000 square feet for the new police headquarters. So in that, I have to be fiscally appropriate and also aware. And so then, having finite resources, made the decision in this current fiscal year to not put those other 10 so that they would roll on when the station opens. But as to your point, whether or not the station that doesn't currently exist, do I have enough people to meet that station that doesn't currently exist? No, I do not. But the hope is, once it gets out of the ground, and the intent is that we will get the safer grant to make sure that we have the appropriate staffing to meet the needs of a new ninth fire station, which I'm very excited about.
Absolutely. And I am too. I mean, that's, I'm very excited about that. But the point I just want to make is, that's years down the road. That's, I mean, that's a reality. It's years down the road.
I don't know that it's years. Years sounds like three. I think we're probably less than two.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you. The, and just... The statement that the main reason we're objecting this was public safety, it wasn't. It was spot zoning. That's the discussion that I had primarily about it. And then I also am well aware of what the petitioner would have to go through if we deny it, which is why I asked, are there other ways? What could More Time offer? How can we reasonably approach this and work through it? But instead, we get the rhetoric of, I'm suggesting eminent domain. That was never said. That was a bold-faced lie. No one up here said they suggested eminent domain. The only time that came up was when Ms. Sykes said how awful that is, and nobody wants to do it. No one wants to do that. So just the absurd suggestion, the political conjecture to suggest that I would be in support of unconstitutionally seizing someone's property, uncalled for. But I do wish that there was something, an alternative that we could come up with, which is why I was asking the questions. That's all I have.
Councilman Helgason?
And as I mentioned at the beginning, when we look at this, R1, 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 R4, R1, 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 R1. That's the definition of spot zoning. That's the definition of spot zoning. You're then saying, well, we can't access the property that's in Campbell County. Only we can access it through Lynchburg City. You can't land lock property, and so there's got to be a way that you can access it. And and you can figure out a way to access it through Campbell County as opposed to the city of Lynchburg? Sure, maybe more expensive. But is that going to be on our citizens on an already congested Leesville Road to add more tax base to Campbell County? I recognize it's being a good neighbor. There's a project that happened years ago when the comps and development happened. And that was working out in agreement because all the, all the traffic was going to come on Ward's Ferry Road. All of the revenue goes to Campbell County. But all the problems and the traffic and the congestion goes on Ward's Ferry Road. At least there was an agreement that said there's some revenue sharing, at least there's something. But here, what we're doing is saying, well, because you're going to have a good, and I recognize it will be probably a good development, but we're now putting that, the development is happening in Campbell County and having the benefit, no benefit to the city of Lynchburg other than spot zoning property. I'm not going to be voting in favor of that because I think spot zoning is not a good precedent. It's also, I think, illegal, and I will not be voting in favor of it. So thank you.
Before I call a vote, is spot zoning illegal? Is this spot zoning and is it illegal? Before I call a vote.
I would, I would defer to Matt for for his opinion as well. I, like I mentioned, I think the, sorry, can you hear me?
No.
I would defer to the city attorney to weigh in as well. I think you could make the argument if for spot zoning, calling this spot zoning, if you only look at the city parcels, I think, given what's in the county, council, if it finds it's in the health, safety, and welfare, you wouldn't consider it spot zoning. Of course, that's ultimately up to council to decide whether you do or don't rezone it. I don't know if that, does that answer the question?
Madam.
In my opinion, it does not.
Can I ask one question? And Rachel, I'm sorry, I'm not more familiar with the project. Is the parcel that is going to be on R1, is that going to be developed or just for purposes of a road?
The R1 portion with the arrow, you see R1 current pointing to the portion in the county, is the portion that is a driveway. And and it accesses the orange piece, which is labeled RMF, which is multifamily in the county.
And is there any, at least at this point for the project, to put townhomes on that particular parcel, or is it only going to serve as a point of access or egress or ingress?
There, no buildings could be built on the county portion if it's rezoned to R4 because there's a 50-foot setback in R4 when it's against R1. So the only buildings would be in the county.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I, so.
I need you one to stay up for one more question after Matt, sorry.
So Madam Mayor, spot zoning is one of those things that's, it's kind of an eye of the beholder. So from what what Rachel has told this body and told me, I think really what they're doing would would be consistent with the area around there. If they're not planning on putting skyscrapers or apartment buildings or multifamily housing on the portion that's currently R1, but it's only a point of ingress or egress, I don't see an issue for that particular community unless it's going to increase the traffic to a point that it would be dangerous or cause a problem for that particular community that's that's over there. So I don't see this as an issue for for spot zoning as long as the traffic isn't an issue.
Okay, thank you. And one more question before I call the vote. Right across the street, I think the last time we saw this image, isn't it multifamily across the street that's in the green area?
That is zoned R3 with a, with a conditional use permit for townhomes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to call the vote on the substitute motion.
Do you want to ask a question from what Matt replied to?
No, we're going to call it on the substitute motion. Yes, go ahead, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Helgason?
No.
Councilmember Missions?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farady?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-2.
Okay, great. So now we'll go back to the original, pardon? Councilman Helgason, would you like to ask your question to?
Yes. So Matt, you just said that if this R1 property is not going to be built upon, what looks, what what happens in the land use map, Rachel and Matt, if you want, when it goes to R4? Does the color change from an R1 to an R4? Not not the future land use, but but the zoning map. So we change this from R1 to R4. So the use of it, now, when you look at the use as well, it's only, as Matt said, A, it's kind of the eye of the beholder, it's only these new 26 units. There's a lot of land back there. All that land back there could then be also rezoned in Campbell County. All those other red lots, all those, instead of just the 2.6 acres, they could have a whole lot more, and all of those would go right through that project and all dump out on Leesville Road because that next red, the next red, and the next red could all access through that road. And that's nothing to do with the city of Lynchburg. So if you're just going to say, well, this R4 is, is, it's going to change in the map, it's going to actually then allow for any of those other projects, and what you had mentioned earlier about health and safety, well, if there's 1,000 units back there that all dump onto Leesville Road, is that a number? Is it 50? Is it 26? Is it what arbitrary number to where it it doesn't degrade? So that's the city attorney, since he said that it's a function of, you know, how it's used or whatever. As I'd said, the issue concerned that, just like you pointed out, was the traffic question. So at least from what I heard, there wasn't proof that all of those red parcels would be draining through that one point. I mean, is that, is that what you're saying? Is that going to happen? That all of those red parcels? What is before today is is the only that we have control over today and in the future is, do we make this project or this parcel go from R1, do we want to spot zone it to R4? If it's spot zoned to R4, then this development, the orange development, can have ingress and egress onto Leesville Road, that project that is now in the orange, the parcel next to it, that is in the red, and the parcel next to that in the red, and the parcel next to that in the red. Those could actually be the same, and they could have the same ingress and egress through that new R4 onto Leesville Road. At what point does the spot zoning theory become a fact or actual? Is it when 26 houses are built or 26 apartments or duplexes or whatever this is going to be in Campbell County, which we have no control over, dump onto onto Leesville Road? Or what is that number? 26, 52? Councilmember Helgason, you know I can't give you a number of what it is. Yep, I know. What I was presented was what the use would be, the actual use, not the color of the map, not the Rs, not 4. What I was presented was specifically what would be in the city and on that parcel. That's what courts look at when they talk about spot zoning, not colors of maps, not numbers, classifications, it's the actual use. What I was presented was specifically that that would be a road. There wasn't any indication that there was going to be a huge amount of traffic going in and out of there that was presented. So that being said, from what was presented to me, it did not seem that that was inconsistent with the rest of the uses around that area, even though the zoning in Campbell County is different. So I gave you my opinion on it, which was was requested by two members of council. Certainly, if you if you don't agree with it, you can vote however you wish. But it, so if more of that, those red become duplexes and whatnot, is that change any? Because you said the traffic right now, based on your opinion, isn't that relevant to Leesville Road. But if these other projects or if these other parcels develop the same way, is there a point that it would be relative to the traffic on Leesville Road? Sure, I suppose if it gets to the point where everyone is draining through that one road, but I, you know, and that's not a question I could answer, I suppose we could. And that's not a question we can answer today on city council nor ever because that property is in Campbell County. What we have control over is, do we want to change an R1 property to an R4? That's I'm voting against it. And I recognize others are, I'm done speaking to it, but I don't think that's a good thing.
All the more reason then for it to be a private road so they control who can have access and nobody else. Jeff, don't interrupt me, you guys keep trying to do that, please. I've listened patiently to both of you. we heard in the presentation that 60% of the property can't be used for residential. Is that correct? It has to be maintained for green space, sort of?
Other things to support that?
Okay.
Stormwater, other things that I think?
So that means only 40% of what is in Campbell County, which I don't even have, as Councilman Helgason rightly pointed out, can't, we, we don't control that. It's an access road, privately controlled, which means I highly doubt the developers are going to be asking other developments to connect to it because that's just a further encumbrance on them. I would ask us to vote now in favor of the final resolution so we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
Well, you don't need a second.
Oh, okay. So let's go ahead and vote then.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Oh, hold on.
Nope, I'm used to being silenced. Go ahead. We can vote.
I'm not silencing you, I didn't see that your hand was up. Please.
once we rezone this to R4, let's say something happens and this development doesn't go through, what will be the byright use of that parcel, Rachel? What will they be able to do with it, budding up to those R1 properties, once we rezone this to R4?
The portion in the city is still subject to the 50-foot building setback against R1, so it really could not be apartments. I mean, it wouldn't be able.
Nothing they can do with it?
It wouldn't be able to meet the the building setback because there's going to be a 50-foot setback from R1 on the north side and the south side. So you're left with a sliver, if anything.
Okay. So, you know, I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Helgason on this because I think that what often happens here, and we saw a prime example of that earlier today, is is the not actually strategically thinking through things and thinking about the long-term impact. I don't have a doubt in my mind that the petitioners have the best of intentions, are going to do a great job, it's going to be a great development, they're going to be responsible in the way they do it. That's, that's not the issue here for me. It's, it's, it's the zoning right up against the neighbors. That's the issue. But sometimes what we see with developments is owners have changes hands, things happen differently than we expect them to. Somebody could come in and gobble up additional parcels adjacent to that in Campbell County and have massive, massive complex, a massive complex dumping out onto Leesville Road. Once we rezone this, it's done. It's a done deal. You know, Leesville's not even a divided four-lane road. It's one of the more narrow four-lane roads we've got, moderate speed. There's a lot of really dangerous accidents that happen on that road. So because of those things, because of what's down the road that we can't control, I can't support it. And and one of the things we learned about earlier today is is when we fail to think things through before we make decisions, Florida Avenue sidewalk in the work session, we learned about that, right? City wanted to spend $15.6 million to build a sidewalk years ago. They got into it, realized, couldn't get it done, right? Because they didn't think before they made the decision. And now they had $4.5 million and they're going to do a sidewalk with what they can for that $4.5 million. We've got to think through these decisions, we've got to think about the long-term impacts of what we're doing, and because of that, and because of the property adjacent in the county and what could be done with that, and that's why I can't support it.
All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Helgason?
No.
Councilmember Missions?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farady?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-2.
All right, moving on to public comment. Next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before city council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear from a citizen regarding people that have inherited property, forcing to sell demolished or $500 a month derelict program property taxes with only a 30-day time period. Ms. Consuela Mosley. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Consuela Mosley, 2315 Yorktown Avenue, Lynchburg, Virginia 24501. Hello, now you're in city council. As a taxpayer's citizen, I would like to know what the city council is doing with the money. The inherited people that have inherited their homes over, over the years from their loved ones, we have not had these homes over 20 years. In 30 days, the city is forcing people to renovate, sale for pennies, and then if not, they first start charging $100 per month, per house vacant plus regular taxes. Example, five vacant houses, 100 times 5 is $500 plus regular taxes. Now they came up with this derelict program for vacant houses. Example, 500 times 5 equals 2,500 plus regular taxes. 2,500 times 12 is 30,000 per year plus regular taxes. If you are forced to demolish, cost is 10,000 plus 5,000, 8,000 if a bestos in the house, which is 15,000 to 18,000 dollars per house. If they demolish your house, you have to pay that money in a time, timeframe, or your can't register your car or your license gets suspended until it's paid and for. In order to renovate, everyone has to be licensed in order to work on your home. If selling, basically, as is repeated again, being forced or to collect pennies. If you go to the property listings website, you can see how much money they have collected over the years, just on property alone inherited by their loved ones, which the inherited ones haven't had these properties over 20 years. Taxpayer citizens, wouldn't you like to know where this money is going and what they are doing with the money, especially in Ward 2, and especially the disabled and elderly? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the Lynchburg City Schools' major classification funding for fiscal year 2024 and transferring $1,671,820 from contingency reserves to instruction. This item was presented to council before, during our business item briefings on April 9th, 2024. Vice Mayor Farady?
Move that we table to our next meeting.
Do I have a second? To table it to the meeting on the 20, no, the 14th of May?
The May 14th at this point.
I'll second it. Want to speak to it?
There are some questions that a number of us have. In delaying it two weeks and talking with our staff, I don't believe there's any fiscal damage to the schools, so if it, for some reason, does still need to be adopted, it still happened, and they're still in good shape, and then if there are questions that need to be answered, it affords us that ability to do so.
I agree. I think there were some questions presented earlier as far as just, that we had based on just what exactly the money was going to be used for, again, not really having clarification on the discussion from our last meeting on understanding exactly where it was going to go and the necessity for it. So if we could table it for the 14th and have someone from the schools back to answer some of those questions, I think I would be happy with that as well, possible. Anybody else want to speak to that?
No.
Councilman Helgason?
I'd be happy to table it because obviously there's a lot of unknowns, but just so, so we actually have a little discussion.
Okay.
I think would be good because there's lots of things on here. I'm reading the March 19th. on here. I'm reading the March 19 letter from the superintendent to our city manager. And, you know, I think we all are tired of political spin. We're all tired of half-truths. We're all tired of mistruths and whatnot. But I see this under here, the first item that the superintendent on here. Oh, we need the extra money because there's a reduction by the state for sales tax revenue of $1.2 million. Actually, that's true. But what they don't tell you is that basic aid goes up $1,138,000 on that same date. Doesn't tell you that the governor's budget amendments go up $392,524 for a compensation supplement. It doesn't tell you about the new addition to the preschool initiative, additional money. She does tell you a little bit about here about that extra 3.7 million that's coming from the state for the all-in. But when you say we need this extra 1.6, 1.7 million because there was a little cut to sales, not a little cut, 1.2 million cut to sales tax revenue, without telling you other items increased tremendously, which means that they actually got more money from the state than was being presented. We've actually looked to see now what the ADM numbers were. I think these numbers were based on last year's ADM being about 7,254 students. Schools actually have an ADM, I think, what did they give us, Greg? On that last report, 7,400?
7,414.
7,414, going from 7,254 to 7,454. That's-
Yeah, what was adopted was 73 something-
386.
Versus, so it's about 51 more students than they had when we adopted the budget.
But when they're looking at the difference in the change, you know, there's actually going to be even more funds based on the ADM. And so for us, I think maybe that's why schools aren't here today, is because of the fact, I see the chairman, sorry, the superintendent isn't here who wrote this to justify this letter of why that money is needed. I think there are extra funds that are coming in once the actual numbers for ADM come out, once the actual numbers are on here and the truth, if she presents to say, hey, we recognize this is lower, but the basic aid has gone up tremendously, which means there's still more money to the state. So I'm glad that we can table this. I hope that we can actually not just table it to the 14th of May, but we can actually table it to after the governor and after the General Assembly adopts all their, the budget, and actually after they settle up, how much is going to be paid for this year, if there's any changes or whatnot. Because some of those items that were given to us last week, I think some folks said, hey, we don't trust what you're saying because of the fact that they threw out some numbers with regarding their claims, with regarding their electric bill and gas bill, saying it went up over 40% in a year. I just, if it's totally needed for classroom and instruction for this year, I get that. But I think this money was set aside specifically in last budget year in a contingency because I think what was stated last year when it was adopted, that more money was coming from the state, is why we sequestered this and put it aside in that contingency. Secondly, if we don't spend this money in this fiscal year, that 1.2 or that's 1.6 million, we can carry that forward for next year, for one-time money for schools to help meet and offset any desire for the school board if they want to keep schools open next year. That can help offset some of the extra funds for next budget year. But until there's, you know, a pressing, real thing that comes that says, yes, we actually need this, I'm inclined to not vote to make those changes because I've seen the budgets. I pointed out earlier today, here was the school's budget before, 100 and some pages, big document shows all the money. The budget this year, like eight pages. So anyway, I'll be happy to vote to table this. And hopefully some of these questions will be answered next time. And I want to appreciate Greg Patrick, too. A lot of these things over the years, most city managers and city departments have said, hey, came from schools, we agree, and I'm thankful that you guys dug into it and you started looking. And I'm talking about these ADM numbers and you're going, yeah, these are real. They're different. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And hopefully you'll, right before the meeting, too, so again, I'm appreciative for the table. As Greg and I were upstairs looking at, trying to balance my numbers with his, and we're kind of going back and forth really quick. And it's not usually very good to make a decision on the fly like that. So extra time will be fantastic, so.
Councilwoman Dolan? This is for, I'm this way. This is for 2024, is it not?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, I think before we call the vote, just for clarification, it's just to have someone back in front of us just to clarify exactly what it is, where it's going, to make sure we all understand. I think there's some unanswered questions. So that's all that's for. So if we can have him back, just to make sure we know those answers, everybody understands, that would be great. So again, the vote would just be to table this discussion and have it back on general business for the May 14th agenda. So if we can call the vote, that'd be great.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Helgason?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Great. Okay. Consideration of-
Mayor?
Yes.
I've heard the, many of the questions that each of you have posed about this particularly, if there are specific ones between now and the 14th, if you wouldn't mind emailing those to me so that I can get them over to Dr. Edwards, so maybe we can also kind of broach a bit of all this before, before or ahead of the May 14th meeting date. That'd be helpful.
Thank you. Okay, consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 24 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating $27,326 from the Library of Virginia to preserve several circuit court records. This item went to our finance committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Ferraldi.
Hey, Madam Mayor, it did come before finance committee, but I do see our clerk is here. So if you have anything else to add, please do.
Mr. Swisher?
Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. I will be very brief tonight.
Okay.
I'm simply here seeking your approval to accept this grant, $27,326, which will be used to reformat and preserve records that date back to 1805. There is an initial appropriation that's needed, however, this grant is fully reimbursable by the Library of Virginia. So thank you so much for your consideration.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Councilman Helgason?
No question, just a comment. You know, those of you who've been there and you see those records, my house is 1912. And I was in there the other day, I saw you, Mr. Swisher, I was in there on an estate issue, but then as we're waiting, I kind of went over and started talking to some of the clerks there. And they're so helpful because the property, my house, which is 1912, was actually in Campbell County originally. So they researched it back and having those archives, I think you said to 1905 is what this will do?
1805.
18, oh my goodness. So they said 1905. I'm glad we clarified that. That's a long time. Having those records archived is pretty slick, especially for people who search lots of times or lots of, and you don't have to worry about paper that kind of gets there. I'm thankful that you were able to get the grant yet again, and I wish you well and keep, and you do a great job in operating that office. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Vice Mayor Ferraldi?
Again, it should go to finance committee. And just for the record, make sure we're clear, move approval.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Swisher. We appreciate it. This does not require a second. If there's not any additional discussion for anyone? No? Okay. Well, we can go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Helgason?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferraldi?
Yep.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the newly amended guidelines for implementation of the Public Private Transportation Act of 1995 and Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 for the city of Lynchburg. This item was presented to council during our business item briefings on February 27, 2024. May I have a motion?
Someone?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
No additional comments.
Okay. Councilman Taylor?
No.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All right, let's vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Helgason is absent. Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0 with one absent.
Okay. All right, for our last item on the agenda, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the revised emergency operations plan. This item was first presented to council during our business item briefings on March 12, 2024, and then again under general business on April 9, 2024. I'll ask staff to provide a brief overview of the revisions asked to be made subsequent to that meeting. Fire Chief Greg Wormser. Mr. Friedman, would you like to give an update on A or B or anything like that? We're waiting for the chiefs to get organized here?
So as city council recalls, there was discussion regarding changing some of the language specific to the equitability section and the, for lack of a better way of describing it, the equal treatment section. There was a consensus to have that changed to where it was more clear that it was consistent with all persons in the community. Certainly, I have tried to make those changes on both of the versions you have. So in my opinion, it's consistent with the state code. It also meets the necessary requirements that I believe are appropriate for ensuring that minority, ethnic, and different language elderly, disabled communities are also taken care of as part of that. From what I understand, city staff has reached out to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management just to confirm that we're still on solid ground with the language. We're good there. Additionally, as part of these two options, like I said, that language for the equitabilities both, in both of them, but there's an A and there's a B. One includes the special, quote unquote, special meeting language that was discussed by Councilmember Missions and Councilmember Helgason. The other does not.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Chief Wormser?
Yeah, I think the city attorney has summarized it very well, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, come before you tonight for the adoption of the city's emergency operations plan, otherwise known as the EOP. After our last discussion about the EOP on April 9, as the city attorneys pointed out, city staff provided you with revisions that we believe addressed your concerns related to the plan. The revised document is before you tonight for final approval, which includes those changes that were provided to you after the April 9 meeting. This plan has been vetted with our state partners, as the city attorneys pointed out, in the meeting, and certainly meets the intent by their definition of the code and is in alignment with other localities as well. As the city attorney has described, there are two options. Option A is, the option includes special language for a meeting to be called within seven days of a declaration, and option B does not, that does not include that language. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt option A.
Second.
Okay.
I appreciate the work that you guys did on this, and I think this shows that we can bring something forward and look over it and actually come up with something better than what we had before. It was a good product before. I think it's even better now. And I really appreciate how this puts the burden back on us, right? When we have something drastic that happens in our city, I think it's very important that the burden of these big decisions rests on the backs of the people elected by the citizens. So if it comes down to it and we make the wrong decision, they can hold us accountable for it. Takes that off of our staff, you know? And it's like, when I sit here and I look at the four people in the plan, I'm right, if I remember correctly, I'm right on that, it's Kent, Greg, Winter, Greg, right, that have the authority to activate the plan. We couldn't be in better hands as a city. I really believe that, right? I don't have any doubt whatsoever as far as activating that plan, trusting you guys to do it, and then kicking it back to us within seven days to come in and get briefed. And, you know, I think in most cases, we're probably going to, we're probably going to uphold what the decision you guys made, right? But I appreciate you guys going back to work on this and making these edits. And I also appreciate, I think Councilman Taylor was the one that made the recommendation for the language. That's what we see, and it's great. So thank you for that.
Councilman Helgason?
And I seconded it. And really nothing to add, other than I'm glad we get, hopefully we get to end on a unanimous vote.
Any other comments or questions? Dr. Wilder?
I know it says about seven days. Couldn't we also call it burnt immediate if we needed to at any time? Does our policy allow that?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Dolan?
So the big difference between this and the original one they were talking about was a call for the special meeting. And as Councilmember Wilder pointed out, I think it's kind of senseless to even have that provision there because we can call for a special meeting anytime. And I think it looks like we're really encroaching on the city manager's lane when we specifically outline it this way. And the other issue I have, and it's really about optics, that when we remove the special reference to minorities and people of special needs, I think that it goes without saying normally, and as the former document had, that normally everybody in the community is included. But to pull folks out and specify that they will be for sure included, I think is something that is necessary. And I don't like the idea that that was removed.
Vice Mayor Ferraldi?
I appreciate the comments from Ms. Dolan. I do believe the language is still in there.
So. It is, it is, but by removing it, I think it speaks to our insensitivity.
Madam Mayor?
Council Missions?
Yeah, just to give you, just for the viewing public to understand what Councilwoman Dolan is talking about as not including is, I'll just read the first bullet on the fair and equal support for all persons in communities section, which is page five of the draft emergency operations plan that I hope is adopted unanimously. It says, "Community engagement and representation. Prior to and during emergencies, efforts will be made to engage all persons and communities, including but not being limited to ethnic and racial minorities, low-income persons, disabled persons, the elderly, and non-English-speaking residents in emergency planning and decision-making processes." I think it's extremely disingenuous to say that this doesn't make special references to minorities and people that are, you know, disadvantaged in some way, shape, form, or other according to this. So just wanted to point that out. And then that language follows through the entire page.
Anyone else? I, the biggest concern to me first is that we are, we're in state code. This lines up with state code, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so obviously we have to meet that in order to be in compliance. I appreciate everybody's concerns and all that had been recognized. And I appreciate the efforts you made, Mr. Friedman, to hear everyone up here. And I think you did a good job trying to modify and consider that and stay within the code. Had some good conversations today with staff and, you know, we've come through some interesting years, the last few years, with a lot of changes in our world and with COVID and, and all kinds of stuff. We've, I think we all have a sense of PTSD a little bit in a lot of sense. So I'm trying to be sensitive to, all of us coming from different standpoints and perspectives of how we look at things right now in this post-COVID world. So I think with that said, if we're in code and that section that has to do with our minorities is, says what it needs to say, and we make sure that it's outlined properly, that they're respected and they're acknowledged so that it says, you know, what it's supposed to say appropriately, then good, I'm glad there. And as far as the special meeting part, yes, we've always had the ability to call that meeting independently as council, and we'll continue to be able to. City manager has his authority as well, and I want to make sure he knows that, and he has our respect in his role, and that he has that from all of us, and he's doing a phenomenal job. So I just want to make sure that that's said and he hears that from us. So thank you, chief. We appreciate that. We want to make sure you're in compliance and nobody gets in trouble. I think we just go ahead and vote now.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
No.
Councilmember Higleson?
Yes.
Councilor Mischens?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-2.
Okay. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held May 14, 2024 at 4 o'clock in council chamber.